Oh, Roy's running the show today.
Be nice.
Okay, it's alright.
Jerry, if he didn't kid me, I wouldn't.
Alright.
That's right.
Good, good morning, commissioners. And that's Chair Harrington is excused for today, so Vice Chair Rogers, over to you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the chairman mentioned that she will not be online, so it'll be for us and we'll do whatever damage that.
Right.
I'm gonna start with Joe Gahl because he tells me his long message to us.
My message is very short, so I'm actually here today on behalf of Diane Taneguchi Dennis, our CEO who couldn't make it. Normally Mark Chockers, our Chief of Staff, would be filling in and he's on vacation, so you're stuck with me, Chair.
What's your message?
I actually know report.
He had a whole bunch of lines.
I had multiple questions for Diane. I'm like, what do you want me to say? And she said, I have nothing to report. Everything's fine.
That's the best report of the day.
Exactly. Thanks.
What about you, Jim?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Actually, mine is a short report too, and I don't want to take away from either County Council Carr or Commissioner Teresa, but we did have ACRE meeting last night and it was a really good training on charter, just boards and commissions, open meeting law, public records. So just, I want to give kudos to County Council Carr for being able to present the law and also have humor along the way. It was a really engaged conversation and just Tom and I were discussing how to continue to ensure that this is delivered to all our new board and commission members in the county as we move forward. So we'll be working on what an implementation plan could look like for that. Also, for ACRE, we will be coming back from a staff perspective with the draft rules, procedures. And County Council will be working with our interim Equity Officer Dora Perry and Amanda Garcia Snell on that. Hopefully, that can also start to serve as a template that boards and commissions can also use and modify their, their needs. So that we're clear on what the rules and procedures are for each of our boards and commissions. And with that, that concludes my update. Our staff are taking, hopefully, taking vacations. And it hopefully seems like a quieter week this week.
Well, sounds like the start of the day.
But it, it, it's something that we've, I've done in the past. We've been doing commission trainings and it's really helpful. And it's really great to do it in person and be able to engage. And in fact, the Commissioner Teresa was there and to be able to show, you know, some humility that even someone with her experience has made mistakes in the public meetings law, use the example of Jerry, what she said was Commissioner Willie made a mistake.
Don't do what he's doing.
But it was.
Let the record reflect that I heard Commissioner Teresa make it.
We've all made mistakes and I, I, I've saved the PowerPoint and I have extensive notes on it and I'm gonna distribute to our team and try to formalize this process where we do regular training for new members and then update training for boards. Because we don't really have a good grasp on that and just answering some of the most basic questions about our system of government to giving people the opportunity to ask those questions was really helpful. And I, I thought it was really a great group and they were engaged and we scheduled it for like an hour and it went for an hour and a half and nobody seemed to be upset. So, but, and I wish that plaintiff lawyers would take the summer off, but they have not. I do have a report on a, as you may have seen the news, we were, we have not yet been served, but there is a class action habeas corpus petition that has been filed in federal court again on the failure of the state to provide defenders or people in jail. There's 11 defendants. The, I checked, most, many of them have lawyers. Most of them are out of custody, so I'm not sure what the point of the lawsuit is. But again, it's, 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 I think in good faith, they're, they're basically trying to deal with the constitutional issue of people spending time in jail and going to court appearances without having a lawyer. And as you all know, the legislature has provided close to $100 million in funding to better address the, the public defender issue in the state of Oregon. So hopefully this will get better, but for some reason they have focused on Washington County. My team is going to meet next week to discuss strategy and how we should address this. I will probably be requesting an executive session with the board to discuss next steps and how we handle this. That's my report.
I'll start and we'll go this way. You know, mind, last night it was a very late night. I was up in the river with the Area 1 Act. We had two of the transportation, the chair as well as our new appointee for the commission from La Causa Wago. So we had an interesting time. What's his name? Talked to him last night. Let me come back to you. I'll get it to you. Highlight was to go to Mitchell Point and I don't know if any of you have been to Mitchell Point, but that's an interesting place. It's, it's the first historic road in the United States. I realize that. They're making a bike path and you go, and you see enough pictures where you see these big windows and you can look out at Columbia River. It's, it's pretty phenomenal. They've got most of it done other than this one little span and they only need about 35 million for about less than a mile. Pretty expensive, but they've got a lot of artery issues. Anyway, I'm sorry, Pam, I don't remember. That's terrible. I was talking to him at some length last night. He seems like a very engaging guy, retired and played in La Causa Wago with quite a background in, in running companies, logistical things. So I think he'll be good for transportation. Beyond that, two or three WA meetings this week. That's it.
Good morning. I'll keep the theme going and keep my talking points brief. And just to report, just for board reference, I really enjoyed the conversation that we embarked on last week about the strategic planning. That was a really good, not only a history lane for Washington County, but to also see the boldness that previous commissioners had. And, and then the direction we will go forward, moving forward. And so I look forward to whatever document that we produce and, you know, what history we leave behind for future generations.
Wow, that was short, but very poignant, very good. Thank you. I'd, I'd like to continue just a moment on the ACRE meeting last night. Tom, as we've talked about, did a really good job, but I'd like to publicly commend the committee for the work that they did too. Because they were fully engaged, asking some tough questions about testimony, about hate speech, about some pretty intense issues and, and what their role as appointed group is. And they were, I think that they were a little surprised at what their role was. And you could just see all the wheels turning and some really, really good in-depth questions. Even when we got into the ethics piece, we had some interesting discussions there about what it means to be ethical. Not just from the same point of bribery or things like that, but the positions you take and the communication that you provide and that type of thing. So I, I was, I was really impressed with the group as well. So thank you very much for that presentation. Last week I went on the tour of the Clean Lot of Services building options with Commissioner Rogers. Thank you very much, Joe and group for providing that information. It was really good. They're good options. And I am hoping that we are moving forward on those. I attended a meeting with Mayor Rosner and Counselor Vince Jones Dixon. It was actually, it, it was a meeting, but it was at the Deschutes Brewery. And it was great for the first 20 minutes and then bingo night started. And it was, it was quite loud, but we did get some interesting discussions in. And it's one of the first times, it is the first time I've met the Chair of MPAG in person. So, and I'm the Vice Chair, so this has been, it was good. But it did discuss the UGR and the UGR report, which also leads me to the next piece. And that is that at the last, last meeting here, I talked about the roundtable that is being formed. And I talked about for stakeholders in this region to provide comment on the UGR. The, there's also a youth roundtable that's being put together and I didn't have a lot of data on that or a lot of information. And the Chair asked if we could get more information. It's basically the next up is going to be recruiting, and I'm reading from the email from Metro, a diverse set of youth members to include regional geographic diversity, gender balance, racial and ethnic diversity, income diversity, both transit dependent and not transit dependent individuals. The group will be approximately 15 members roughly between the ages of 14 and 28 who are interested in becoming more active in regional policy and land use decisions. That, that the makeup of the group is, I still don't know what the purpose of that group is and what, what, what we're looking for from them. So I'll be coming back to you with, with that. When we're also continuing to discuss, I had a brief meeting this morning with LUT to talk about the people that have been invited to sit on this UGR report and where, where we may want to make additional recommendations. Along with Commissioner Phi, I thought that the roundtable last week was very good and I, I appreciated everybody's engagement. I think it was hard on all of us to put our devices away and really, really be engaged, but it was great to see that we all could do that. So thank you for that. And it was, I think that the facilitator was really good. And she worked, worked us through the process and kept us on point. So thank you for providing that for us. I had the Wingspan Business Operations Overview along with Commissioner Willie and it was interesting. There's a lot of questions still that we need to be asking, but Rachel did a great job along with Matt in presenting information to us. I met with Eric Cole yesterday. Eric is the Executive Director of Revitalized Portland Commission. Who works with, he works for Schnitzer and they're involved in the Bybee Lakes piece and that type of thing. But anyway, I talked to him about possibly becoming a member of Westside Economic Alliance. And I'm going to be introducing Elizabeth Mazzara Myers and Eric together to, to think about what that, what that might look like. Today I have a jail update from the sheriff. I have a meeting with Dave Nielsen from HBA. And I had the Chief Human Resources Officer interviews this week and then an MPAG coordinating meeting this week. So that is it.
Yeah, thanks Pam for that reminding me of the, the Wingspan Overview. That was a good presentation. We look forward to the complete report.
May I interrupt with a compliment? You did a great job of providing information to me and providing kind of a background of the TLT. So thank you.
Yeah, I've been around working with that TLT and the Wingspan and a few other things for a while, so it's complex. So let's see, I also got the jail update yesterday from the sheriff. That was a good conversation. Met with Montloma County Chair Vega Peterson yesterday on Bybee Lakes. And just asking what, what their position was and trying to get a little background on it because up to this point in time, the relationship hasn't been very good. So seeing what we can do to work with them as well. I was more on the Bybee Lakes side of things, but also saying that we here in Washington County are trying to find a place for a similar facility and bring something like that to the county as well. So working with those folks on that. Courtney, Tom, Courtney made a presentation similar to, I don't know if it was similar to yours last night, but it was on public meeting laws with the rural roads folks. And it's always interesting, you know, there's only about, there was only about six or eight of them, but all of them were amazingly uninformed on the public meeting laws and what they could and could not do. And so this is a good process. I think we need to continue that. I certainly support that.
Much of my presentation was stolen from Courtney.
Well, that's a good basis. Yes, always give credit where credit's due. The roundtable, yes, I agree, was an interesting conversation. I am not a big fan of trying to find the right words to put in a strategic plan. But I did enjoy the afternoon when we talked about priorities for the commission and what's coming down the pike. So I thought that was a good session. Met with Executive Director Monique Claire Claymore with GPI and got an update on a couple of their applications. They had asked the state for some money. They did not get that request. But they're still working on a variety of other consulting, trying to improve the image of, of the city of Portland. And you know, Wall Street Journal came out a couple of weeks ago and it was certainly not positive in any form or fashion. So I got a lot of work to do there and she realizes that. We had the picnic, the summer social last week and that was, that was fun to get everybody together. Because we don't see the whole gang on a regular basis, so it's good to get them together and, and have that, have opportunity to talk. And so it was a good picnic. So thanks for doing that.
And just a point of clarification, this is the County Administration Office Department.
Not a county picnic. Yeah, that's right. Sorry, said that wrong. And then, yeah, I think, I think I'm going to try and keep up with Commissioner Teresa's vacation days, so I'm gonna take it while this week.
There's no comparison.
That's all I got.
I know you have another item.
Well, I just wanted to mention one thing about ACRE that wasn't mentioned, and that is that we've, we will be getting two additional members of ACRE. We've got, we have two people that are leaving because of personal issues, one moving out of the area. And so I think that we, we will be reviewing the recommendations here. And I just wanted to let you know that part.
Name of the, I remembered it, Jeff Baker is. Made a mistake in front of everybody calling Jeff Barker because we had a Jeff Barker out here forever. And I explained to him why. He's a very gracious guy, so no problem.
Great legislator and a great police, former policeman.
Policeman.
Jeff Barker.
Yep. Alright, the next item on our agenda is that we have a letter. I think this is the Matt Perry letter that came to us last minute. Doesn't seem pretty, pretty good. I don't, anybody have a problem? Alright, we'll sign. That sounds easy. Now, Community Corrections, Biennium Plan Review.
Here's me. Erin's making it go solo?
Yeah.
Is she? Is she shy?
She's sitting in the back.
Are you checking? What are you doing up there?
I haven't had the opportunity to go through this little clicker yet, but thank you for the opportunity to present before you today, Acting Chair Rogers and the rest of the board. I'm Nate Galloway Rand. I'm the Director of Community Corrections here in Washington County. So can I get the slide deck populated?
We don't have it apparently. Is that right, Kevin?
I did not.
Slide deck wasn't in the packet. There was a seven, four page document in there, but there was no.
Since this is your first presentation, we ask that you sing and dance your presentation. That could happen.
Maybe, maybe just send it to Kevin quickly.
So you're not into the singing and dancing?
Not into singing and dancing?
Only if Pam is.
No, I, I.
Okay, I'm with Pam.
I'm sorry, I probably should have said something, but I noticed that the slide deck wasn't.
What's the email that I can send it to?
You can just send it to. Yeah. Yeah, just don't send it to Kevin Barton.
So Kevin, it's in PDF. Hopefully you can load it and then.
Yeah.
Reminds me of the meeting last night. We were, we were in a hotel because internet wasn't working and we had people from all over. And it was, it was not, hybrid meetings are not particularly good unless you're really set up for them.
Yeah, I understand. So while I'm here, I'll just explain a little bit to you all that don't know and, and the rest of the public. The reason why we present this, we call it a CCA plan or Community Corrections Allotment Plan. It's to inform the public on where those funding dollars are going. And we had to get it ratified before the Public Safety Coordinating Council. And that recommendation came with a unanimous vote to you all to push this thing forward, to get it ratified with the Department of Corrections as a contract between DOC and Washington County. So that's the reason why we're here, to get this thing pushed through. So we've already started our biennium. It started July 1st, 2023 and it'll go through the end of June, 2025. And we have, we have a slide deck now. Will I still have control?
No, I'll have.
You have control. Okay. So good, very good. So that's the, the first part of it. You can see the ORS that, that outlines those expectations for us to go through this particular process. And next slide, Kevin.
I wanted to talk a little bit about our mission and our core values and that we hold true to equity, diversity and inclusion. We adapt. We're, we're constantly changing, obviously, within our industry. We have a very good leadership team here, very good practitioners that work within Community Corrections and are, and are committed to the work. Part of the core values are accountability, collaboration, respect and heart. And I think heart is the intangible that I don't think gets shared enough. And we have really difficult work, but we have a lot of people that are dedicated to it and get through to promote public safety. Next slide, please. So I wanted to provide some director notes here. Obviously, I'm, I'm new to this county. I'm not new to the industry. I've been in the industry for about 23 years, but only three months here in Washington County. We have some challenges with recruitment as well as retention of practitioners. And it's not just within Community Corrections. I think you're seeing that across the industry and public safety. We also have budget cuts. So I'll talk a little bit about the budget cuts in that 10% or a little over 10% came from the state. Obviously locally, we have approximately a 4% budget cut in Washington. And then we also have some ballot measure 110 impacts. Our industry was built around dealing with drugs and addiction and, and some of the fallout there. Well, ballot measure 110 totally changed the landscape of, of our industry. So we have some philosophical shifts that we're making and that's a challenge. We also have some pandemic influence coming out of the pandemic. We, we've had a number of different hires that, that came through during that particular phase in our, in our, our world. And it's going to take a little bit of pivoting to, to move forward because we're in the people business and we got to show up to work. So that's going to be a heavier, heavier lift, I think, for us. People-centered assessments, this is a, this is part of our case plan strategy that we have for each one of the folks that are on supervision. And another challenge for us, gets better. There's a lot of challenges, but it gets better. I'll provide some solutions here. Senate Bill 1510 had some impacts for kind of unfunded mandates as it relates to contact standards. And I'll just kind of set the table here. The state provided what they see as a forecast of what we have to hit for contact standards. And quite honestly, we haven't been hitting that number and it's a tune of about half of the contacts that we have been making. Which means there's going to be some, some changes in our practices and our priorities and just getting out there. Just one thing that we've been working on this week is getting some vehicles. And we have six vehicles for about 50 POs. We're trying to increase that number. We've looked at some other funding streams through the justice reinvestment programming and there's some promise there. So we can increase that amount of resource so we can get out there and hit those contacts. And we're going through a cost analysis for, through the Department of Corrections on the funding formula. What's actually going to cost to do this work and, and it's going to be significant. So that's not likely going to happen until the 25, 27 biennium, but there are some efforts through our legislative committee as well as Department of Corrections to right the ship, if you will, in the short session coming up in February. Next slide, please. So these are the strategies moving forward is to focus on recruitment and retention. We got to make sure that we have a really good place to work and that that is known. So I want to launch a bit of a campaign in terms of retention and recruitment and just celebrate the work that we do because it's very meaningful and, and it's purposeful. We want to aggressively seek additional revenue, things like the justice reinvestment programming. I was a bit surprised to hear that we hadn't ever applied for the competitive grant for the justice reinvestment program. And now we're going to be, you know, pushing for that and that's to reduce prison usage across the state and specifically in Washington County. So we also want to create some clear expectations for our folks. And one of the, just in a survey that we do, it's called the Gallup Survey. It's an evidence-based survey. One of the things that came out of that survey is that some of the expectations weren't as clear to our practitioners. So I want to make sure that the expectations, especially as we're changing and increasing our contact standards and some of those unfunded mandates, that we're hitting those benchmarks and that's what we're going to be measuring. In fact, I just had a conversation, one of those whispering conversations, well, how are we going to measure these different things? And it's going to be monthly audits. I hate to call it an audit, but that's essentially what it is. And it's something that, that we definitely need to engage in. Also engaging in these high level groups for our industry. We have people that are on the executive team for the OACC D. We have folks that are pushing on the legislature and trying to engage those folks to support us a little bit more than they have this last biennium. And there's a concerted effort to make sure that we're being strategic in our, in our time and where our focus areas are. And then lastly, we need to show up. We got to work hard. We can't give up. Can't give up hope. We got to stay true to the mission. And, and I think that we are in a really good space right now because we have the support locally. We're getting support statewide from the practitioners and other leaders across our industry. And so that's very promising, I think, for us. Next slide, please. Because I'm new here, I want to kind of tell you how I look through three different lenses. And within our industry, we're in the people business. So relationships are hugely important. We got to build rapport. We got to build trust and we got to engage our stakeholders. And so that's, that's one of the lenses that I look through. The other lens that I look through is performance. And that's more of an objective lens. It's the, you know, the graphs and the dashboards and all the different metrics that we take a look at and analyze. And then third, I take a look through the, the resource lens. And resources right now, as I just presented, they're kind of low. And we're hoping to get those a little bit higher in the next biennium. And maybe even in the short session, I think there's some room for improvement there. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is where, I hope you don't fall asleep, but I'm going to get into some numbers. The legislature this last time granted us $246 million statewide in what we call grant aid. We got a one-time $5.7 million expenditure for the, or excuse me, revenue for the expenditures on increase of inflation. And that's for personnel matters and, you know, COLAs and different things that, that come through. That still did not meet the $284 million biennium that we had last time. So we took a huge hit and it's about a 10% reduction in state dollars. So as it relates to Washington County, that's 1.2, almost $1.3 million just in the state revenue. Some of the saving grace that we had, those are population compared to the rest of the counties went up slightly. It used to be 8.94%. Now we have a little over 9% of the entire population for the state of Oregon. And that's how, through the funding formula, that's how we get funded is through that 9.04% of the $246 million plus the 5.7. If that makes sense, please apologize for all the numbers. It's sometimes hard to follow.
Did they give you any explanation as to why the cut?
Yeah, so our population decreased significantly statewide and that is typically the reason. And that is typically the reason why, it's always tied to the actual population, we do a capitated rate. And the capitated rate, it's a dollar amount per person that you supervise and it's based off of. The risk assessments, so you, which I'll get to here in a second, but if you have a high-risk profile. Those, those folks are funded at a little bit higher rate, you combine it all together, it spits out a capitated rate. You multiply that by the amount of people that you have on supervision and then there's your allocation.
And the money on supervision or the people on supervision went down because of measure one-ten?
Partly because of ballot measure one-ten, other issues came through the just prosecutorial decisions. During the pandemic, I think, and you know, we have a, a crisis on our hands with people being represented. If they're not represented, sometimes those cases get dismissed and we saw in Multnomah County that. That process was a bit compromised during that time and they have. Almost twenty percent of the entire population for community corrections, which means. That's a significant factor in the overall population and the capitated rate.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Okay, so this is our overall pie, if you will, for the funding revenue that we have for community corrections. What I'm talking about today is specifically in the grant aid and that's the thirty-eight percent that you see in the orange there. And for those that can't differentiate through color, it's on this particular slide, it's the right-hand slide. That, that is labeled grant aid thirty-eight percent. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of that piece of pie, if you will. So Community Corrections Center, that's a twenty-four-hour operated facility. Currently, we have capacity for approximately ninety-six beds. They get one point three, almost one point four million of the grant aid. Our parole and probation services are six point six million. We have the Center for Victim Services is two hundred and fifty thousand and the administration is two hundred and fifty. And then we give approximately twenty-six percent of our grant aid to the jail. And that's specifically for punitive types of interventions for people that are being, being non-compliant on supervision. Next slide. I should, can, can I go back one, I should set the table here for this. Without getting into the weeds too much, if you have questions, I'd be happy to follow up with you offline. But this is one of the areas that I think we can improve in terms of the messaging back to the state. And by that, I mean the Department of Corrections gives us a set amount of money. And typically, it's for supervision services. The money that we give to the jail. It's, it is for punitive intervention, but I believe we can. Analyze this a little bit better and maybe move some of the general fund. Away from community corrections and take more of the state fund, it's more of a shell game, quite honestly, but it's better messaging. In terms of what those state dollars are being used for, it shouldn't necessarily be used for a punitive intervention on. At, at the tune of twenty-six percent. And I, I would just encourage this, this body to help support some of those initiatives and messaging back to the state. In that. The next biennium or next presentation that I make may be less than twenty-six percent for the grant aid dollars. And it might be an ask for additional general fund to go to the sheriffs. For that particular. Concept. Anyway, okay, Kevin, thank you, so this talks about our cases by. State funding and I want you to pay particular attention to the unfunded cases. You can see in the last five years, at least from this particular column graph, thirty percent is unfunded. At this particular time and that's the highest it's been in five years and I just want you to, to think about that a little bit. I'm hoping that the trend stops because we made some internal adjustments, we're working with the courts on hoping to. Convert some of the unfunded cases to what we call bench probation and not formal probation, so we're still working on that. The other thing that I want you to take a look at, if you, if you're confused about that. Small slivers, it's called the P two P or person-to-person, that's from Senate Bill four ninety-seven that we. Got funding for the domestic violence misdemeanor cases, so that's the reason why that orange sliver is not in the other. Years that you see that are populated up there, you can see our felonies have dropped just a little bit, yet. We are still engaging that particular population, next slide, please.
I, I have a.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, please.
Or I can wait to.
No, whatever you wanna do.
This process check. I have a question.
Yeah.
The comment earlier about the cuts, the Washington County cuts, you mentioned measure one-ten.
Yes.
And then in this slide, it's also in the reading materials.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. It said the, the possession of controlled substance was funded. And in the parentheses, measure one-ten is mentioned.
Yeah, so.
Bridge those two.
Yeah, of course.
And I have a second question.
Yeah, no problem, so misdemeanor funding happened with possession of controlled substances, I believe in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, somewhere around there. So it used to be PCS was a felony, possession of controlled substance was a felony, I'll refer to that as PCS. And then it got reduced down to a misdemeanor, so user quantities of people that had narcotics and drugs, illegal drugs on them. Was a misdemeanor, they got misdemeanor treatment, if they were dealing, it was still felony. So then ballot measure one-ten takes place, right? And that moved it to an E violation, so those people are no longer on our books. We do have some pre-ballot measure one-ten cases that were misdemeanors, misdemeanor convictions before. Ballot measure one-ten took place and then that's what is populated up there with the PCS cases. Those eventually will be gone, once they have earned discharge or their, their sentence runs out. Typically, it's an eighteen-month, can be extended depending on what other elements of their situation were. Say it was tied to a burglary one case or it was tied to unlawful use of a motor vehicle case or something to that effect that was a felony. That felony will continue to ride, will have the misdemeanor on their, their books and will continue to supervise that particular case. So that, that's the, the reason why you have, you still have PCS that's showing up. Very few of them though, they'll be gone eventually.
Thank you, thank you for that historic background and that answer. And then this, the same slide, my question is with, with this slide too. I'm wondering if for the benefit for myself and others who are watching, if you could just aggregate the case number that's unfunded. What's?
So. Yes, I can get you the breakdown of it.
Tim, can you take note of that?
Okay. Um, I can get you the breakdown of those particular cases. DUIs is a large number of them that come through, typically it's within the threshold of the third DUI. So you get diversion on your first one, you get a conviction on your second one, typically the third one, they'll, they'll send you to. Probation, you'll get a stint in jail and. And that's typically what we're seeing with that particular population, that's, that represents, if I'm not mistaken, about half of those unfunded cases. So DUI is a. It's a thing, I think it compromises public safety and we wanna make sure that we're prioritizing it, we just don't get money for it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just Nate, the question I had was on the felonies and it's my understanding the felonies are going down, I expected that number to. Be a further decrease. Uh, and that's again because of the legislative. Classification of what is a felony versus what is a misdemeanor, is that, is that's what driving that number?
You know, anecdotally, I think so. The other part that I'm seeing again anecdotally is that. A lot of the attention is for police work is off of the drugs. And there used to be a much more proactive approach to drugs, I used to be on drug teams and part of the boards and that sort of thing. But you would go after, you know, lower level drug users, you'd flip them. They'd be confidential informants and then you'd work yourself up to, you know, the higher-end drug dealers. That's not happening as much now, it's very much a. It's, it's just a different scene nowadays on the street and the way that, that we work crimes. So in that effort, you know, prior to ballot measure one-ten, you would find a lot of other criminal activity. And that's, I think, what's happening with the reduction in the felonies that we're seeing go through the justice system. Again, anecdotally and I, that's just my experience. Next slide, please, unless there's other questions.
No, that's good, thank you, Nate.
Okay. So this is the po, the population breakdown as it relates to person crimes, property crimes, statute crimes. The statute crimes are the, are decreasing, we're at twenty-five percent now, again, that's likely because of ballot measure one-ten. That includes the, the drug crimes and dealing crimes. We have, we're anticipating that to increase because of House Bill twenty-six forty-five, did I say decrease or increase? We're, we're expecting it to increase slightly because of House Bill twenty-six forty-five and that's the fentanyl bill that came through. That's, that's into effect now and that gives law enforcement opportunity to cite people. Between five pills and twenty-five pills, people that were on the threshold of dealing drugs. Likely gonna be overdosing and those sort of things from fentanyl, so the legislature gave us that tool to get them engaged on supervision. And quite frankly, into treatment, because that's what they need, so. The other thing that you need to pay attention to for twenty twenty-two is the violent and person-to-person crimes have gone up. Significantly, we're at fifty-nine percent of the, the population that we're supervising are in the person crime category. This, I, they say in presentations, you're not supposed to have very many slides, so I apologize if this is too busy of a slide. The bottom part is very, very important and I wanna call your attention to the community risk versus the supervision level. And the community risk is what, essentially what we're funded at is a state. And you can see that fifty-six percent is low risk, that's a really. Small number as it equates to the amount of money that we get. So those people don't need a lot of supervision, quite honestly, they don't need our resources, they don't need punitive intervention, typically, they do fine on their own. Most of the time. It's the high risk and the medium risk that we pay most attention to that get the bulk majority of our time and resources. On the supervision level, we're now held to that standard and it's across the state, we don't really have much of a choice in the matter. So whatever supervision level that we. Put the number to, high risk, medium risk or low risk, we're held to that standard, that means a lot more work. So a lot more work there on the supervision level, a lot less funding on the risk level, if that makes sense. Okay. Next slide, please, Kevin.
So.
Yes.
I have a question, Nate, you're saying. I saw when I was reading, I was following, but I think I'm, might have got myself confused.
That's okay, I am too.
Listening. The, the two pie, the. These two.
The bottom.
I'm, I'm pretty clear on the top part, but the bottom part, the risk. There's nineteen percent high community risk.
Yeah.
And then if you shift it to the other pie, there's twenty-seven percent.
Yeah.
So you're equating funding versus the amount of work versus, is that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that there's not enough funding for the amount of work that we're doing. And that.
Yours, I, I see, I see, okay.
Yeah, that, that explains why we have.
You have twenty-seven percent work to do, but you only have funding for nineteen percent of what you're doing.
And we're not even close to hitting our assessments that were required to by OAR. We're not even close to hitting the contact standards that are gonna be implemented through this Senate Bill fifteen-ten, section twelve. It, it's not even close. Yeah, it, it's, it's a, it's something that we need to reprioritize the, the different. Processes that we've been. Engaged in for many years and now it's time to pivot, it's time to stop trying to be all things to all people. And by that, I mean, we've been brokers of housing, we, we are treatment providers in many essence. We, we have people that are providing cognitive behavioral therapy in, you know, in their offices. We're doing all kinds of things and we need to get back to the basics in, in my estimation. And that is risk assessments, it's case plans and it's accountability and contact standards, that's what we need to be doing. And the other stuff. Other people are funded for that and we need to make those referrals to those resources, so.
Are you gonna talk more in the next few slides about, you said person-to-person crimes? Are, are you gonna get into that, because I, I remember I've heard this presentation through PSCC, so I'm sorry if I'm getting ahead of you.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, no problem, I, I can unpack the person-to-person crimes a little bit. So domestic violence has been on the rise and that was an initiative that we, we passed. And I think it was Senate Bill four ninety-seven in twenty nineteen, twenty-nine, somewhere around there. I know it was later than that, sorry, I'm getting my ears messed up, but anyway. We've seen an, an increase in, in DV and we're trying to make sure that those folks are getting the help that they possibly can for. Through treatment, it's a long process to change people's core thinking. And that's just something that we've been focused on. So I think that's part of the reason why the person crimes have gone up a little bit, at least that they're hitting our books. And we're doing our best to engage that population.
Yeah, and I think the other statistic that I remember is the age group that is driving this increase, the person-to-person being much younger. And against family members, am I remembering this all correctly or am I got?
That's not in this presentation, but we can definitely follow up with those, those demographics and figure out who's on supervision. Um, in terms of the, the. The age.
Yeah, yeah, because that was startling.
Yeah.
Not only the age, but it's family members they're attacking, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty sad statistics that are coming at us. Okay, thanks Nate, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, this is our successful, how am I doing on time?
My, okay. Getting close to.
Okay, I'll, I'll speed it up. So this is our successful case closures, this is just a breakdown of people that completed sentences. We're gonna put a lot more energy and effort into the earned discharge, it's something that the legislature has expanded, it's not just with the probation cases. It'll be also with the PPS or the post-prison supervised cases post-January first, that's when that law goes into effect. So there's statewide ninety-five hundred cases that we have to review come January first. So you're gonna see an increase in the earned discharge go up likely in the twenty-three and twenty-four data. Next slide, please. Um, this is something that is. I, I, I really wanna showcase this because of those people that complete supervision, sixty-four percent of them. Have some sort of employment, whether part-time or full-time, so. If they complete supervision, it means they're doing pretty good and they're engaging in the community, they're, they're contributing back. And also if they complete, sixty-five percent of them have benefited from treatment. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about ballot measure one-ten and the metrics that we're following on that in that. The people that are receiving the citations are only engaging approximately, and I think it's less than one percent. Of the folks that actually receive a citation, let me repeat that, less than one percent. Of people that are receiving citations for ballot measure one-ten are engaging in treatment to the point where their, their citation is dismissed. We, on the other hand, have sixty-five percent of people that have benefited from treatment. If they're on supervision and complete sex successfully, that's a pretty big contrast. So let, let that sit in just for a little bit. The other, the other thing that we will also wanna showcase is the pro-social engagement. This is really important as it relates to our BIPOC communities, because we know that family is super important to. Our BIPOC communities as they get in, back engaged into the community and it, it's, it's something that we're learning more and more about. To get family on, on track with their sobriety and with their success back into the community, it's really, really important. Next slide, please. This is a, a data that historically we've been judged by, if you will, and this is the recidivism data. You can see. That it has dipped statewide, the top right-hand. You can see, um, that it has dipped statewide, the top right-hand corner in the metro region, it's also dipped. And then in Washington County, specifically in the, um, bottom right-hand corner, that's Washington County. And that's measuring approximately twenty years of information for recidivism. Next slide, Kevin. And then these are some of the focus areas that I just want to reiterate. Equity, diversity and inclusion is going to be something that we're going to be unpacking a little bit more in terms of racial disparity and some of those metrics that, uh, that are, um, I think it's a problem statewide that we need to get, we need to get focused on. And that's going to be something that we'll be pushing forward. Behavior change obviously is, is what we want to do for folks that are engaged in antisocial patterns of behavior, uh, accountability, resource management, and then commitment to victims. When I came here, I was very pleasantly surprised that we are actually putting our money where our mouth is because, um, victim services and victim restoration is something that most community corrections agencies say that, hey, we do this. But yet, they don't have a victims, um, department within their community corrections that we do here in Washington County, and that's really, really exciting to me. Next slide, please, Kevin. And then, uh, finally, this is the ask after forty minutes or whatever it's been, um, that we request that you're, for your support and approval of this biennium plan, uh, before you today and, uh, and get that ratified before the Department of Corrections. Thank you. Yeah, I think the questions are, yes. Yeah.
Probably have some. You have some more?
I, I, just a curiosity, converted to bench.
Yeah.
One of your slides you showed, what does that mean?
So we have formalized probation of, basically, if you're on formal probation, you have a P O assigned to you or a probation and parole officer assigned to you. If you're on bench probation, the ultimate jurisdiction is with the courts. There's no P O involved. So typically speaking, bench probation, the only real attention that you get is if you get a new crime or you get, um, alleged to have committed a new crime into the, into the system. So that's, that's the difference, P O versus non-P O.
Which case probably then you'll get a P O if you do it.
Yeah, typically, there's a, you know, natural consequence.
Feeling left out, so you just go commit another crime.
Well, yeah, so you see a lot of bench probation cases, um, with lower level types of crime, like the nuisance types of crime, public nuisance crimes, um, you know, peeing on the sidewalk or, you know, um, the, other disorderly types of crimes, so.
And some of the statistics that you shared in the report, one, like, converted to bench in two thousand and twenty was very low. I think it was under fifty or so. And then it was back to normal, comparing to two years prior that you've had some numbers two years moving forward, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. I couldn't understand if that was a positive thing or a negative thing, because there was no.
Yeah.
I didn't see a narrative.
It really depends on the case, and I'll just, you know, if we have enough time, I can tell you a little bit about this. Um, but one of the things that we're struggling with is if you go back and ask for bench probation, um, it wasn't part of what the plea agreement was initially, you know, when they went through the adjudication process. So if they pled some crimes down with the understanding that they would get probation and our services, it's hard for me to go back and say, hey, I know that you did all these other things, uh, pre-adjudication in terms of plea bargaining. Then you got adjudicated or convicted, now your agreement is to be on probation and do treatment and all these other things. And now I'm asking the judge to go back on that and say, yeah, could you convert that to bench probation, please? It, it rubs people wrong, and it's not what the intent was for the justice system. And so we're, we scaled that number back. We had a list of, I think it was two hundred and some people that were on the original list when I started seeing the unfunded cases, um, here in Washington County. So I wanted to pare those unfunded cases down a little bit, especially anticipating the budget cuts with locally and with the state. And, um, we ran into a little bit of resistance. We worked with the district attorney's office. Um, they objected to all of them, just for the record, uh, and, and I totally understand. But they also, um, they also were part of that discussion, and, and we're, we're working on that to, I think, moving forward in terms of bench probation and cases that get supervised, we, uh, we think we have a solution for it.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for this presentation. I, I have a question that might go a little bit past, so I apologize. But if we could go back, Kevin, to the, the, maybe the third slide in, uh, strategies moving forward, and then the people performance re- resources strategy, uh, I really appreciate the fact that you provided us with the lens.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Things through. And when I look at the strategies and then the people performance, uh, and resources piece, how do you, how do you prioritize your strategies? I don't know that they are in a priority system here, and how do they in priority relate to your lens?
Yeah, so that, I, I purposefully did not put them one, two and three, because there's a lot of overlap there. Um, but if you were asked, if you asked me to put them in order, I'd put people first. And I think the reason why is that it, it, we're in the people business. And there's a lot of intangibles that don't get captured in the performance and the metrics piece of things. It only tells one part of the story. Um, but when you, you know, run across people that have really changed their lives over the course of time, that's super impactful. That's, that's really what we're looking for, not necessarily the numbers on the metrics, although it's, it gives us some indication on success. Um, but you can't do any of that stuff without the resources. And you can't have engaged and meaningful conversations without the support, um, with money. And unfortunately, that's, that's typically, um, our downfall, is if we don't have, you know, the resources. So I would say, if you asked me to prioritize, I would say people, performance and resources.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the, the presentation. It was really interesting. I learned a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I've already asked my questions. I, um, I did blend the presentation I got from J C Pack into yours. That's the reason I was asking the questions, juvenile, and I shouldn't have been, but, uh, anyway, it's, it's an interesting still. The whole picture is very interesting and troubling, actually, so.
Yeah.
I have one comment and one question.
Okay.
It was nice to meet you over at the, uh, barbecue.
Yes, thanks for showing up.
Yeah, it was nice.
That was a great day.
Yeah, it was a nice day. Um, my comment, um, it was refreshing to hear your comment about getting back to basics. I don't care whether you're in private industry or in government. There's a lot of what I call mission creep. There isn't enough things that we don't want to do and would love to do, and there makes sense, but we can't afford to do them. So I applaud you. I, that, that's, uh, a lesson for all of us. We need to go back and say, what, what's the possibilities of what we do? The thing I didn't hear today, that's just me, and it was a good presentation. You had a lot of good information. Where are we going? Um, and the reason I asked that, you have a biennium plan that, that doesn't really, I think, look at where the future might be. And there's a lot of things and a lot of factors that are going to influence that future. So if you were the king for the day and said, okay, I need to plan five and ten years out, what, how do I start that process? That wouldn't probably affect your two-year plan, but it might start to move your thinking a little bit on where you're going. And I, I suspect that what you're telling me, or us, is that, um, the, the problems that you are dealing with in your area are not going to get less acute. They're probably going to be more acute, there are probably going to be more of them, and you're going to have less funding. And so that's the world that we live in. What are you going to do about it?
Yeah, so I, I really appreciate that question, and I am a forward thinker, but I also realize that, um, I don't have the answers. And so I, I want, I want you to know that we are, as a state, um, in a, a strategic planning building phase right now, and we just hired some consultants out of Texas, um, through the Oregon Association of Community Corrections Directors. Um, that consultant team is interviewing all the directors across the state. They're also meeting with the regions, and they're meeting with me. I'm in the, I'm the president of the association. That's how I know this. And, uh, and also, um, we're having a retreat locally here, right at the, over in the grand in October. And we're going to unpack all of that. We're going to get back to the basics, find out what the common themes are within our industry. And then we're going to be presenting that to Aaron, my boss, and, uh, and you all will be, um, privy to that information. It's just going to be a recommendation, but I want to align Washington County with the strategic plan for the state. And we all have very similar core values. We can find common themes. We can have some low-hanging fruit. We can achieve those different successes and, and strategic goals together. And, um, I think I have some of the answers, but I'm, I'm going to make sure that I partner with everybody across, um, Oregon so we can have a unified front and, uh, and move forward. That's just part of it. The other part of it is lobbyists that we've changed, so we, we have, uh, some significant, um, horsepower now in terms of lobbyists and engagement there, and that's part of the strategic plan, and we're moving forward with that. In fact, we just ratified the contract with our new lobbyists. Um, they're going to be part of the strategic planning building, and we're going to be engaging with the legislative committee as well. So, um, that's the resource building phase of things. Um, but yes, we're not just looking two years. We're looking five, ten and twenty years down the road.
Good answer. Yeah, I did, I did. Remember my early days in my profession, maybe Jerry had the same thing. And people would look at us and say, if you don't have the answer, who does? And I think you've got the capabilities, and I think you have the foresight to come up with the answers. I, I, are they apparent? No, but if you can't figure it out, we're in trouble. So I, uh, I, I hope you put some muscle power to it. I, I think you can do it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody?
Uh, my comment is great presentation too. You know, I bombard new questions, but, um, this is really a great presentation and a great report. Dudos to all the staff, uh, put a lot of effort to this. While you didn't call it out, I did read through, like, the restorative justice lens that is applied here, and I appreciate it. And then your numbers showed for it, especially, you know, I know you call out the victims in the community, but you're also there for the perpetrators. Is that clients? I'm not sure.
Adult supervision.
The adults, yeah, the, the sheriff's always correcting.
Yeah, it's okay. It changes.
People in custody, in our custody. I appreciate it. Um, you all being there for, and then the, and your number is showing for it, the sixty-five percent that you called it out. There's a lot more numbers that you shared in the report, but it's pretty powerful, so.
Yeah.
And Washington County has a lot of great people who have, I feel like we have our fingers in a lot of different nationally, like our county administrators. I C M A, now you're sharing this, like, it's just amazing that, the, the, the amount of expertise and the nationally collaborative efforts that you're all pulling and bringing that to Washington County. So I appreciate you all hiring the right people and stealing all the great talents and keeping, yeah, great job.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm, I know the questions aren't displayed, but I'm in support of what you were requesting.
Thank you.
I think you've got unanimous rule to move forward.
Okay. Thank you, board. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, Joe, I guess, next, do you?
Kevin. Yeah, I think we're a little early. Um.
Not, your team's not all here.
Allison, is Rahim coming? Do you know? We're supposed to be ten-thirty, so. All right, come on up without Rahim.
Well, give him a break and wait for him.
We can give a little break.
Yeah, we can. Come on, Roy. Yeah.
It was still twenty and a half.
It's a problem. You're missing one number.
Oh, I mean, if you take one break, that's fine.
We're going to take a quick break then.
Yeah, one minute. What do you want, ten minutes?
Ten, ten, twenty.
We'll give him twelve minutes. We just gave you a twelve minute.
I saw the looking.
All right, welcome back Commissioners and back to you Vice Chair Rogers.
And we're on, okay.
Thank you and thank you for taking a break so everyone could be here for this work session. So the Board may recall last month Clean Water Services was here. You kind of a context about our operating IGAs and the history of those and how important those are and the components of those. Today, we are going to spend a little time with our partners from the City of Hillsborough to talk about the process we've embarked on over the last two years. Next month, the City of Beaverton will be here in a similar short work session. I'm gonna let Bob Baumgartner introduce everybody who's part of the team. This team, this foursome right here, actually, there's been a large effort with lots of staff from both organizations. But for the last few months, this is the team that's been crafting the actual document that you're going to see later this year. And I want to give them tremendous thank you. They are co-creating, we did not take the existing IGA since this last month and just amend it. We've kind of started from scratch based on our conversations and we're creating a new standard to look forward to in terms of our relationship. So Bob, I'm going to let you introduce everybody and get on with our presentation.
Thank you very much. Chair Rogers, members of the Board, my name is Bob Baumgartner. I am the Director for the Regulatory Affairs Group at Clean Water Services. And I just did want to touch on a couple of things or a couple of aspects of this discussion very quickly. As you heard, we really did start from scratch and we did that because we intended to create a new relationship between us and the cities that we work with, much more collaborative, and it has been a co-creation. The commitment that we have both between the Clean Water Services and the cities is very clear because we have assigned our best people to it, our best and brightest. And with that, I would like to introduce Allison from the City of Hillsborough, Jamie from Clean Water Services who I work for, and Rahim with the City of Hillsborough. And turn it over to Allison who will give a perspective of where we are in our co-creation.
Thanks Bob. Good afternoon or good morning Councillors. And as Bob mentioned, I'm Allison Brising. I'm the Division Manager of our Storm and Sanitary Subsection and Rahim is my boss. He is our Assistant City Manager.
You can promote him Robbie.
Deputy City Manager. It was coming to me, I'm sorry Rahim.
We always have clicker drama.
That's why Kevin gets paid the big bucks.
Well, thank you. So talked to you a little bit today about why we're here and how we got here and what the changes we're looking for are. So as you guys may know, we're working on renewing this IGA that was drafted in 2005. And we worked under that IGA for a long time really successfully with CWS. But the City of Hillsborough has grown a lot since 2005. We've changed a lot, our customer base has changed a lot, our community has changed a lot. And frankly, our public works has changed quite a bit. And as that change has happened, we've noticed that the IGA that was drafted in 2005 has some parts of it that aren't working as well for us anymore. Although in the spirit of partnership, we've been able to keep it going really well for the last fifteen or so years. Don't judge that math. We noticed that there was a timing issue where we could swap the old IGA and start the new IGA. And we were utilizing that opportunity to make some changes. And so a couple of quick facts about Hillsborough and how we've grown and where we're going. We have really increased our population, we've increased our high-tech corridor, and we're really increasing the way we're managing our infrastructure. We have a really great asset management system that we're working on utilizing. And we've implemented it over the last about eight years. And we really track every nut and bolt in our system in this digital asset management tracking system and are able to project our maintenance needs for that in the next ten years, as well as the annual lifecycle or the full lifecycle of that asset. So it's one of the things that has kind of changed the way we've been working with CWS is we're working in a much more digital age, if you will, and working towards a much more complicated permit in this digital age. But with all of those things combined, the old IGA just wasn't working and we were able to take this opportunity to start to make some changes collaboratively together. As we started those changes, we came from a place of mutual understanding. We worked really well together in knowing that things that we agreed on were environmental stewardship. The residents and community members of Hillsborough are very strong in admitting that those are their goals, that we're striving to protect the environment. And then we know that the way to do that is through permit regulations and permit requirements. But beyond that, working towards more than just what the requirements of the permit is to make sure that the rules and protections are working for everyone in our community. And be it our industrial partners, our community members, or our development partners in our residential communities. As you guys may know, we have two big growth areas in Hillsborough. So we've got North Hillsborough, which is hugely growing in our industrial sector. And we have South Hillsborough, which is really building a lot of great communities for our residents to live in, both in middle housing and single-family residential. With both of those, we have a lot of advanced needs in our community. And as a city, we're working really hard to provide those needs in a full-service planner. We take great pride in providing for all of the different needs of the community members and working with them individually to meet those goals whilst keeping the environmental stewardship and permit regulations at the top priority. But when we're doing that, we want to be able to work with them on an individual basis and have that kind of local autonomy of doing it the Hillsborough way. That is very much still trusting in the environment and trusting in our partner CWS, but providing for the community that is uniquely Hillsborough. And with that, we were looking for a little bit more autonomy, a little bit more flexibility in how we administer this permit. And while still keeping environmental stewardship high and working with our partner CWS in a very collaborative fashion. But we do know that that means that we're going to be taking on a lot more of the accountability and responsibility as well. And those are things that we are excited to take on. And luckily, we've learned a lot from working with CWS and how they were able to manage things super well for the last however many years. I'm not going to try and do math in front of you again. But it's one of those things where we're ready to take that step in feet with our partners and we're excited to do it in kind of that collaborative fashion. That was kind of our goal, was to try and get that better customer base, try and find those ways that we can work together. And then also integrating some of that new technology that we're working on. And the asset management and the collaborative maintenance requirements. So and as we grow, we're having a lot more of that maintenance and asset management. And it is nice not to have to be just one entity doing all of it and working collaboratively. So in that spirit of collaboration and relationship building, we know that CWS does things really well. And we want to make sure that we're doing things really well too. And I believe a hundred percent that we are and that we're capable of it. But we don't want to overstep anything that if CWS is doing something really well, we don't want to pay for things twice. So it's important for us to find ways to work in collaboration and use the best of CWS and use the best of Hillsborough, provide for the best environmental stewardship, environmental stewardship solution, as well as providing for the community members' highest needs and best uses. So we were able to kind of build this relationship over the last two years where we were creating different work groups and different consensus teams that come up with the best solution utilizing all of the resources that we had jointly. Giving the community a much better product by combining our resources and working super, super well together. So as you can imagine, that's not an easy thing to do. There's a lot of, a lot of different ideas on how that would be the best way to do that and what that looks like. So for the first year, we held about eighteen, three to four hour long listening sessions or collaboration sessions, if you will, where we brought in fifteen to twenty people and we talked about fifty different topics. And out of those working sessions, and that's year one here, we came up with some really great guidelines of what worked best for us in the future, what utilizes the best of all of our resources, what utilizes the best of all our technology. And so after that first year, we kind of developed some sub-sub teams and then we started the process of drafting the IGA. And so Jamie and myself and Bob and Rahim have been working on that diligently for the last year. And we are getting close to finishing it. We still have little sections that we're working on. And we're hoping that in October that we'll be able to present that to you in its, in its full state. But the goal of that is to have a new IGA that is inclusive of our new technologies, inclusive of kind of that spirit of collaboration and relationship building. Gives us that flexibility and autonomy while still providing the most and highest environmental stewardship goals. And then also transferring some of that risk and liability from CWS to the City of Hillsborough as well. So with that said, we are excited to present this to you in October. We think that two years have been very fruitful, not just in this document, but in forging these relationships between our staff members. We have a team of seven or eight highly skilled, best of the best, as Joe mentioned, that have been working on this. And without them, none of this would have happened. But I really like to link Bob and Jamie and as well as Joe and Damon Rishi and Andy Braun, who've also worked on this really, really diligently with us, as well as our key team members. Ashley is in the audience, Mark Gibson and Charlie Shell and Justin Jensen. And Rahim, obviously, for providing the guidance and support for that. But hopefully, when you see us here in about two months, you will be able to see that spirit of collaboration, that team building, and really and truly the best service that we can provide to the community. Thank you.
And with that, we would like to turn it over to any questions that you may have.
Is that the entire presentation?
That is it in a nutshell.
Finished, okay. Well, I would like to start with a colleague down there who's been with Hillsborough for a long time. Now we're fortunate that UCs over here for a few years. Anything you have?
I think this is great, I think it's important. From back in my mayor days, I can say that the relationship with Clean Water Services was not that great. And so I applaud Joe, I certainly want you to let Diane and Mark know that I applaud Clean Water Services focus on that collaboration and certainly improving those relationships, not only with the City of Hillsborough, but I'm assuming, you know, that's going to be with all the cities in Washington County. So congratulations and good job on that, appreciate that. Yeah, these are, the statistics you showed for Hillsborough are pretty amazing. I knew that, obviously, that the population had significantly increased the way you demonstrated there. I just didn't put a fifty-five percent number to it, it's pretty amazing for that. And you certainly upgraded your mayor, you know, that there was some problems before, but yeah.
My microphone.
But yeah, no, congratulations on this. We look forward to continuing this very positive relationship.
I just appreciate the information. I appreciate the fact that both parties have come to the table in such a collaborative manner. And hats off to you, Joe, for, for your work in this as well. I think the creation of the kind of a new approach by Clean Water Services was at the right time.
Thank you Commissioner Tree.
I just have a, Allison, great presentation and thank you everyone for being here. The October presentation, the City of Hillsborough presents the IGA to the City Council. You're also, is that when our Board expects this IGA to be?
I think we will come after we're done at the city.
The city.
Hopefully an approved IGA from the City of Hillsborough Council that we will then bring to you. So it would be second.
And then in the event, the Board of Commissioners have changes, how does that work? Does it go back to the City Council again then?
I would think.
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate we have changes, but just wanted to.
Depending on those changes, we would probably have to go back to the City of Hillsborough. And I also anticipate you seeing the document, the final document earlier than than acting on it. So if there's anything that jumps out, there's so many eyes on this from different perspectives. And I've always said the dividends for this process is going to play out over the future. We're going to have an updated agreement, which is great because our current agreement is, you know, outdated, was written at a different time and place. It's more about the relationships that we've built. I really feel when there's an issue that comes up, because there's always issues in the City of Hillsborough or next month you'll hear from Beaverton, that we know each other now and we have a better sense of each other's roles and we trust each other. And we'll tackle those together. So instead of two different organizations, we really are working more as, as an extension of each other. That's the real dividend that I see from this, this effort over the last couple of years.
And the benefit beneficiaries are there, are all of our residents in Washington County.
Yeah, because when there's a problem and you've never worked with a counterpart from another organization and your first discussion is to address a problem, but I don't know who Rahim is. I have no basis to know what he does or what's important to him. That's a little tougher. Now we know each other and there's a level of trust and we're working on a variety of things. We know what their priorities are and how we as Clean Water Services kind of fit into that puzzle and how we can be a partner and help them achieve their community goals. That's really the dividend that I see that's going to play out over the years. Rather than a document, oh, we have a problem, let's pull up, you know, paragraph ten, what are the rules? So.
Maybe, maybe perhaps this, I don't know, if this slide could be so that people know when this IGA is coming to the Board of Commissioners, could be updated just so that people who go to the side and don't want to listen to the video, they can just see it. But that's super minor. And Allison, I can relate to the growth changes that you talked about, especially the South Hillsborough. I live in Aloha and I see especially reeds crossing, how it's blooming. And I remember being that like empty lot with a whole bunch of birds that we used to see. And now they're houses and just kudos to developers out there in Washington County. How, you know, I know our Board engages conversation around the permitting process and how long that takes. But then I see reeds crossing and how it's, you know, there's no housing and then there's houses now. So it's just amazing and as well as the North Hillsborough side. But I definitely see and live and breathe on the South Hillsborough development. Congratulations to the City of Hillsborough, Rahim, to your leadership and to Robbins and the upgrade of Mayor, the former Mayor Willie, now Commissioner Willie mentioned.
As I opened that door.
And a lighter question, were you there with City of Hillsborough when Commissioner Willie was Mayor?
Sadly, no. I've been with the city for the last about four and a half years.
I think maybe to add, this is a sign of like the city's growth. Allison's position didn't exist a couple of years ago. Her position is new as the Division Manager over the Storm and Sanitary Division. Just going to our growth and our staffing has to grow as well. And candidly, without Allison here, we wouldn't be at this point having this conversation. So it's also her leadership too.
Congratulations.
Yeah, my comments are, thank you. I was going to count the number of times you said collaborative, it was a lot. And so hopefully in the future that, that we don't even have to discuss that, that's just a given. It's a standard of doing business. But what I've, I know Joe knows this and I mentioned this before a little bit. My, my dream is that you become a customer for all of the area within your, not only your UAA, you know, your urban growth boundary agreement, but also in any growth areas. And that we would have one bill to you every month and you would handle all permitting, all of, all of the issues within that area. So that truly you're a customer of what was intended when the whole organization, Clean Water, formed. And that's an organization that does what? It treats and transmits to the plants and later became stormwater. We don't have to be in the retail business, as I call it. And maybe we shouldn't, it's always been, when I was a mayor many years ago, that was always a rub. I mean, we didn't need clean water in our areas, even in our expansion areas. So I, I guess, and my dream, if I want to say that, would be that we look a little more holistically, a little more futuristically and saying, you're not defined by your boundaries today. You're defined on what your boundaries and aspirations are. Can we come to some kind of an understanding or agreement that maybe you, they're your customers, not ours? And maybe you do the permitting instead of us. And we still have to take your influence, we don't want you dumping motor oil. But so we have to have that collaboration to make certain that everything is, you know, cleaned up before it hits our plants. Because it's very expensive if you don't. I think there's a different look we need to have, that we keep looking myopic layer boundaries as today. And I think we ought to look at boundaries of what you want. And if you don't want those boundaries and they shouldn't be in your urban growth area agreements, they shouldn't be in your urban growth boundary expansions. We should say, all of that is yours, how did that become yours in our vernacular? And how do we send you one bill? You bill them all. And obviously, there'd be some compensation for that. But then there's also some way for you to take and permit so that you're not, they're not coming to us. And so if I'm way out, that's okay, because I tend to look out a little bit further. And I had a conversation about this very topic yesterday with some new guy over there in Hillsborough, Steve Callaway or something. But anyway, Steve and I were chatting, we were at another meeting in the gorge together. I said, could you expand to that point? He said, very interesting, I think we're there. So I hope that you, and I know it's too soon for this one, but maybe not. Maybe you ought to take your blinders off and look at something a little bit more expansive. So I'll stop with that.
No, thank you. I think that's very much in line with what we're looking at. In fact, I think you'll see the spirit of that in some of the new changes that we're making in the IGA. Taking on some more permitting responsibility and obviously.
Would you mind before we leave, because I, I mean, some of you I've worked with a long time, so I'm not, but I'll start with somebody. I did, Bob, just introduce yourself so that everybody, and for the record, I don't, did we do that earlier? I don't remember catching everybody.
Yeah, I don't know if we did that, but we certainly can. My name is Bob Baumgartner. I am the Director for Regulatory Affairs at Clean Water Services. That'll turn it over to Jamie.
Jamie Hughes, I'm a Program Manager also in Regulatory Affairs, Water Services.
And I'm Allison Brising, the Division Manager of our Storm and Sanitary Sewer Program.
And I'm Rahim Haji, I'm the Deputy City Manager with the City of Hillsborough.
Thank you, just for the record, and we all know who was here. Anything else the Board has, thank you. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we want to chat about today? Anything coming before us? Anybody has anything? Any last bites?
Take the rest of the day off.
All right.
All right. Yeah, well, you do what you gotta do, yeah. All right, so I guess with that, we're adjourned.
I think you were supposed to provide some caveats.